As it relates to the purchase of a Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2001 Dodge Ram 400 ambulance and declaring an emergency.
2011?
2011. Did I, what did I say?
2001.
Okay, my bad. It is 2011. I just read it wrong. Okay. Mr. Pownell?
Could you just bring us up to speed because what delayed this last time was the bids hadn't been...
Yes. With the ordinance you have in front of you regarding the bid process, we did put out bids to four of our local financial establishments. We had responses from three. We did the bid opening at 4:19, on my birthday, 4:19, 2011, at 4:00 p.m.
Happy birthday, Lev.
Thank you. And I'll read these off. Community First Bank for ambulances, one ambulance for a total of 1,600, I'd say 163,350 dollars at 4.89 percent. And for two ambulances was the same amount, I mean, the same amount of interest.
What was that again?
4.89. So it's the same on both, one ambulance and/or two ambulances, okay? First National Bank of Berryville on one ambulance was 6.25 percent. For two ambulances, it's 6.5 percent. RVS Bank, one ambulance was 5.5 percent. For two ambulances, it was 5.5 percent. Cornerstone Bank did not issue a bid, submit a bid. We took the Community First Bank at the lowest interest rate of 4.89. That is reflected in your ordinance that I read last.
That's for one?
Yes, sir.
That's just for one, right?
It states in here that, let's see, for... Yes, for one. Yes, that is correct. I just want to be sure I said it, knew what it was before I said it, so. Yes, that is for one ambulance.
I gave you all one copy, or a copy of, for one ambulance, but I do have, if you all wanted to do two ambulances, I have ordinances reflecting two. I have them right here for you. I thought it'd be too confusing to send out to separate ordinances. And so, this other one's just paralyzed ambulances, or two ambulances.
Mr. Pownell?
I just was concerned because when I saw it on the agenda, there was just strictly the non-competitive part. I thought at the budget meetings where Chief Williams had given us their views, that we were really looking at two, if the interest rates were right, and it appears to be that they're the same, whether we buy one or we buy two.
Yes, sir.
Do we still have that option, or...
That's totally up to you. That's why she presented, she prepared the other ordinances for two ambulances at the same interest rate, the 4.89. We submitted this, but we were going to let you know we had the other one on hand in case you wanted to deal with that. So what's...
I just thought he had an awful valid argument for point two.
Well, I'm gonna let Chief Williams give you, since we're in discussion phase of the same, this current state of our ambulances, it's not gonna be pretty. Okay, so, Reece, you have the floor.
Good evening, counsel. Just to give you a brief rundown, one of our main units past month has been in the shop, and got it back last week, and the cost to get it out of the hawk was four grand. Prior to that, last month, or the month before, we spent nearly 2,500 on the same unit. This was all done on the engine. Who knows how long it's gonna hold up from here on out? While this unit was in the shop, we had a call out north of town, and our other unit, while the crew was inside the house getting the patient ready for transport, the ambulance decided to die. So they had to have one of the hollownow first responders sit in the unit, and it died three times, and he restarted it, and it died again, and restarted it. So, it's another issue with another unit. I strongly would recommend for all of you to look at two units. This worries me, and I feel that loss of life could be the, the only hate to see that happen.
Beyond that minor issue of life, doesn't that, not having the number operating also affect our contract with... Do we, do we have a figure for the monthly payments for one and two versus just the total cost? Does anybody, has anybody run a calculator on it?
I didn't prepare one. I can go and give them a quick.
I'd just be curious, you know, to compare, because, you know, that's, that's an awful big income generator, and not having them with what's going out and...
Okay. Does the council wish to have these for the two ambulances? Okay, stop. Why don't you just pass them around, Doc?
Do you want amortization schedule for one?
Just, just to ballpark what one per month would be and two.
Okay, keep going. Yeah, yeah, just keep on passing them around, making sure everybody gets one of each. Okay. Change if you got, okay.
Start it down that way.
Make sure they are two separate for both ambulances, okay? We good?
Oh, that's for two, I'm sorry.
This is for two.
Anybody that doesn't have one? Everybody's got one?
Two?
Two, two, two.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody's got one before we jump into this thing.
Oh, two, two different twos?
Okay.
That's why I wanted to make sure everybody had the right...
So I guess the important thing to do, while you're waiting, is decide you're gonna vote on two or one. Mr. Berry, go ahead.
Well, I found my amortization schedule that she gave us at our budget workshop. For one, it was roughly $3,000, so therefore $36,000 per year for one ambulance. Two ambulances multiply it times two. So $6,000 a month, times 12, 72,000. My math's right, somewhere there about. I was hoping she wouldn't leave so quick, but the chief can probably answer this question. If I'm not mistaken, our last payment on the fire station's gonna be finished in August?
Yeah, I think it's, uh...
There about.
Next year.
Oh, it's this, I thought it was this year.
I think. I'll have to double check on that if it's long, but I was thinking we had one more payment.
I thought it was this year that we were finished with that.
I know the fire truck, I may be getting the two confused. A new fire engine, that may be the one where we have another payment left on that next year.
So basically, and when Yvonne comes back, what we may be looking at is either way, a payment will be finished paying off one this year and another one next year. So we'll basically have the money from that, because we're not gonna be paying for these items...
Yeah.
Until we get them, even though we go ahead and, and make the authorization to buy them. And isn't it gonna be August when we said we might be able to get those? Of course, now we're...
We're broadly pushing September.
Now we're September, because we're, yeah. So, yeah. So, you know, it'd be my, and I don't know whether I need to make a motion or not, but at this point in time, which still for discussion, would be to go ahead and do the two ambulances. I think that's it. We've got the money there, because we will have the money, just because we're gonna quit paying on something. I don't know whether it's fire truck or the fire station, but, and that would make the payment.
The emergency.
Yeah, you think, you remember that too? Yeah.
Plus, didn't she say we had enough in depreciation for one of them anyway, but we didn't want to, if we didn't have to, depending on the rates?
That was in depreciation for the whole thing, so, yeah.
That was what we initially...
That's what we were...
...landed on at the workshop. It's for two.
What concerns me, guys, and I'll just be straight up with you, is, is we're in this part of the season right now, but where we don't know what's gonna come over these mountains with us. I mean, we are in the next six days of 50 percent thunderstorms. Nothing may happen, I hope not, but it's happening all around us, and if we get stuck with a two out of ambulance, and one of them goes belly up on the side of the road, hopefully not with a patient in it, maybe just responding to, if we're that lucky, that's gonna put us in a very precarious situation, and...
We can't do anything anyway, though.
I know, that's what I mean.
Which one of these do we need first?
The choice.
The non-competitive or the...
Right.
Yeah.
Is there any way to go ahead and sign the numbers, the ordinance?
I think she's actually gonna get you all some other documents, so you'll have them in front of you, if you don't have them now. Then we'll, we'll proceed. Mr. DeVito?
I have no problem with one ambulance, without a doubt. Personally, I might feel a little more comfortable, in a couple of months, we'll be at mid-year budget review. We'll know where we are a little bit better with city finances in a couple of months. Being as they're not gonna be delivered until August or September, I'd sign off on one right now, and then in our mid-year budget review, first part of July, within a couple of months from now, that, that we know a little bit better where the city finances are right now, in that mid-year budget review, and would entertain a second one at that time.
Would you tell them about the, the schedule for the chassis right now, as it stands?
Yes, Dodge chassis, we don't make a decision tonight. We, I'll have to make a phone call tomorrow at the latest in order for us to get our foot in the door on a Dodge chassis. Ford chassis is gonna be stopping their line, I believe, in the second week in May. And so if we don't go with Dodge, we'd have until the second week in May to make a decision. Otherwise, we'd be holding back until they start coming out to 2012.
So, that's the situation with the chassis part. From the information that we can find, it, the chassis, the Dodge chassis with the original Cummings engine in them, will last a whole lot longer than the Chevrolet or the Ford hybrids. And by hybrids, these are engines that have been taken from a eight-cylinder gasoline engine and transposed into a diesel engine, which have a whole lot of problems. They're good out of the gate, but they don't last long.
Non-competitive.
So... Yvonne, have you got stuff for them?
The bay's done in September, still.
Everybody's brain's starting to turn to mush already. Okay, go.
I haven't done this one before, but I move that we assign an ordinance number to the non-competitive.
We need a second on Butch's.
I thought it was just discussion.
Well, I, nobody's seconded it, so...
I'll second it. It was for two?
Yeah.
Motion.
Non-competitive.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for discussion on two ambulances. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let's talk about two ambulances then. Everybody take your other one, just say to decide, that way we don't, I won't get mine confused.
Do we need a sub motion to read that?
His motion was to buy two.
To buy two, okay. I'll go with that motion. I like that one better. To buy two ambulances, all in favor? Same vote?
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, yeah, that was my bad. All right, let me restate the motion one more time. Mr. Berry?
My motion was to buy two ambulances.
Buy two ambulances. Mr. Pownell seconded it, is that correct, sir? The purchase of? That's why I'm asking you.
To read those two particular ordinances for two, yes. There's, there's two different ordinances that we have to read in order...
Yeah, one is on the bid, and the other one is on, but for two ambulances?
Yes.
Okay.
So do we have a second on Butch's motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Me.
Yeah, okay.
Now we're in discussion.
Now we're in discussion. Any, jump in, folks. Okay?
Well, Yvonne, I think, Yvonne said she wasn't sure that one of our payments is gonna be finished, whether it's on the, do you know how much that, that is, that payment?
It was the bay.
I think it's the bay.
That's what my amortization schedule says.
I thought that was...
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, too.
The fire station loan construction, $81,966.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Eighty-one, nine sixty-six is what the loan payment is.
Okay. Here we go.
Here we go, I'm sorry. Yes, the bay is done, last payment's August the 1st, 2011. The amount of the principal and interest is 10,435,48 a month. When I did the amortization schedule for the two ambulances, you know, this is not from the bank, of course, I came up with 6,148,78 a month.
For, for two?
For two.
Okay. Any further discussion on? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I guess we, process is to read both ordinances?
We need to have a motion to place the first one on its first reading.
Okay.
I need a number.
Mr. Pownell?
To make a motion that we assign a number to the ordinance waiver of competitive bidding for two ambulances on its first reading.
Okay. Everybody understand the ordinance? Second?
Second.
Made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You want me to read it? Lengthy? Okay.
Give it a number first.
Yeah, okay.
Two, one, three, six.
Two, one, three, six.
Three, six.
Okay. And, to assist the clerk, I shall read this. Don't expect great things. An ordinance of the city, I'm sorry, it was, okay. An ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, authorizing short-term financing... Wrong gear. Okay, that's why you gotta keep me straight, guys. I get all excited when we do good stuff. Okay. An ordinance to a way of competitive bidding to the purchase of two Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2011, I got it right, Dodge Ram 400, 4,050 or 4,500 ambulances for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Fire Department. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the city is currently in need of two new ambulances, and whereas the fire chief has researched the cost and availability of acquiring an ambulance with a generator-powered module, GPM, that will allow the fire department to operate the equipment independent from the chassis engine, and whereas it is the recommendation of the fire chief that the city purchase two ambulances with a GPM mounted on a Dodge Ram 4,500 6.7-liter four-by-four chassis built by Frasier &amp; Limited of Bel Air, Texas. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, the requirements for competitive bidding and the acquisition of these ambulances shall be hereby waived, hereby be waived, okay, shall hereby be waived. Section two, the quote from Frasier Limited, and the amount of $326,700 for the ambulances described above shall hereby be accepted. Section three, that the city council for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas accepts the terms of the financial arrangements from a note with Community First Bank for $326,700 at 4.89 percent interest for a period of 60 months payable monthly and amortized, I'll get it right, installations of principal and interest over the term of the note. Section four, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event anyone or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect, such invalidity, illegality, and enforceability shall be, shall not affect, shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions have never been contained herein. Emergency clause.
Don't read it yet.
Okay. Is your motion?
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2136 is right.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, prevails, read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Move to place ordinance number 2136 on its second reading by title only?
Motion to approve ordinance 3136.
Suspend the rules in place.
Okay.
Ordinance 2136.
Okay, motion to suspend, motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 31, 2136, and read on by title only.
You need a roll call, roll.
Okay. Okay. Let Ms. Clerk catch up.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Okay. That's the first one. Now, I need a motion to...
Now you read it.
Okay. An ordinance to a way of competitive bidding to the purchase of two Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Fire Department.
Move to approve ordinance number 2136 on its second reading.
Second.
Made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Read it again?
No.
If there's an ordinance...
Unless somebody wants to go three times.
I don't.
We're wet. We're voting on it? We gotta have a third one?
You gotta have a, you have to have a motion if you're going to.
Okay.
Is there any reason for expediency in this issue, or, I mean...
It's got an emergency clause attached to it.
You need to let the fire chief address the emergency of whether it needs to be done immediately.
Can you wait two weeks, or...
If you wait two weeks, you're not approving buying it tonight.
Yeah, if we wait two more weeks, and we're not gonna be able to get on the, on the chassis that we are wanting to get, which would be the Dodge, I might add, this, this chassis is gonna last us a long time, or a lot longer than what these Fords have. And I just strongly recommend we, you know, have your blessings tonight to go ahead and move forward with this.
May I discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
May I?
Go ahead.
Is it open to discuss?
Are we in this, what? Are we in discussion phase right now, or we're still?
You've not...
We don't have a motion?
There's no motion.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I don't feel that this is actually, we're in an emergency. We've been discussing this already for the third month, through workshop and on. I think it's time to pass this, get on with it. So, you may read this, an emergency clause, but I don't think it is.
Actually, I started working on this last October.
Right, okay.
Okay. Mr. Pownell?
To make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2136 on its third reading.
Second.
By title only?
By title only.
Second.
Made and seconded, to read again, by title only? All in favor?
Need a roll call.
I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Last one.
An ordinance to a way of competitive bidding to purchase two Frasier Type 1 14 GPM, 14-foot GPMs on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Fire Department.
Move to approve ordinance number 2136 on its third reading.
Second.
Made and seconded, approve on third reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Move to read the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion to read the emergency clause, made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, okay. Because we're gonna have to do this all over again, on the next one. Okay.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Doctor one?
Okay, emergency clause? Section five, okay, emergency clause, section five. The city council and the fire chief of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, finds that because of the deteriorating condition of existing ambulances and potential risk to patients, it is in the best interest and for the health and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs to purchase these two ambulances for the city, that an emergency exists, therefore this ordinance shall go into full effect, full force in effect immediately upon its passage. The end. Does this have to be read three times?
No.
Just one time?
Nope. No votes, no, it's already done.
Done deal. Okay, that's on the bidding. Mr. Pownell?
I move we assign a ordinance number and read on its, put it on its first reading of the ordinance for two ambulances.
Okay. Motion made to read and assign an ordinance for two ambulances? Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Shall I read this one also?
Sure, and then it's gonna be two and, it's gonna be two and three seven, and just plug in two and three six.
Two and three six, okay. On the other, okay, ordinance number 2137, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no.
All right, now we read the ordinance? Do we have to vote on reading the ordinance? Like, to make it cautious? Okay. Okay, all right. An ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, authorizing short-term financing as relates to the purchase of two Frasier Type 1, excuse me, 14-foot GPM on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances, and declaring an emergency. Whereas on April 21st, 2011, the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, approved ordinance number 2137?
Six.
36, okay, there we go. The other one, which authorized waiving of the bidding process to purchase two Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances, and ambulances in parentheses, from Frasier Limited of Bel Air, Texas, to be used for the purpose of life safety by the city of Eureka Springs Fire Department, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs is authorized pursuant to amendment number 78 of article 16 of the Arkansas State Constitution to enter into financing arrangements, having a length of no more than five years for the lease or purchase of real or tangible personal property, having a useful life of more than one year, and whereas the ambulances are real and tangible personal property, having a useful life of more than one year, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs has negotiated a financing arrangement with Community First Bank in accordance with amendment number 78 for the purpose of purchasing the ambulances approved by ordinance number 2136. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city, the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, number one, that pursuant to the provisions of amendment number 78, the city of Eureka Springs, the city council, I'm sorry, does hereby authorize a financing arrangement with the Community First Bank for the purchase, for the purpose of purchasing, the ambulance is authorized by ordinance number 2136, that the terms of the financing arrangements are as follows, a note from the Community First Bank for $326,700 at 4.89 percent interest for a period of 60 months payable monthly and amortized installments of principal and interest over the term of the note. Number three, as provided in amendment number 78, the annual debt service payments on the note in each fiscal year shall be charged against and paid from the general capital revenues of the city for the fiscal year, such fiscal year, for the purpose of making the annual debt payment, debt service payments, and, starting to get cross-eyed, there is hereby and shall be appropriated to pay the note an amount of general capital revenues of the city sufficient for such purposes. The finance director is hereby authorized and directed to withdraw from the general capital, general fund capital of the city, does that say general capital fund, or just...
General fund.
Okay, general fund capital of the city, the amounts and the times necessary to make the monthly debt service payments on the note. Number four, the city will not take any action or suffer or permit any action to be taken or conditioned to exist which causes or may cause the interest payable on the note to be included in gross income for federal income tax purposes. Number five, is it getting hot in here to y'all? Really stuffy?
Open windows.
It's not gonna hot flush.
Yeah, it may be.
I'm afraid to call it power surge.
Won't be no motive, sorry. Power surge.
Thunder.
Number five, the note is hereby designated as a qualified taxes-imped obligation within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code. The city expects that the aggregate principal amount of its qualified taxes-imped obligations excluding private activity bonds within the meaning of section 145 of the code, including those of its subordinate entities issued in calendar year 2011, will not exceed $10 million. The city does not reasonably expect that it, that it and all subordinate entities will issue taxes-imped obligations not including private activity bonds within the meaning of section 141 of the code and amounts exceeding $5 million in calendar year 2011. Number six, the city will not reimburse itself from proceeds of the note for any costs paid prior to the date the note is issued, except in compliance with the United States Treasury Regulation number 1.150-2. This ordinance is in official intent for purposes of such regulation. Number seven, that pursuant to ACA 14-54-302, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute such documents as are necessary to accomplish this financing. Number eight, that all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herein or, herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Number nine, that each of the provisions of this ordinance is severable, and the decision for any court having jurisdictions as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions. I do not read the emergency clause. Okay. Motion to accept is read?
Motion to accept as read.
Okay. Made and seconded, any further discussions? Passing and ordained? Ordained, ordained, okay. Okay, we'll do that when we read them, when we get to the emergency clause part. Okay. We just voted as read that one, so we're up.
The motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2137?
Seven.
On its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded to read by title only?
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
It's getting dry.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Of course, yes.
Okay, motion carried. Entertain the ordinance to read by title only. Do we have to do it two more times?
Just with the title, you're good to go.
Okay. In ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, authorizing short-term financing as relates to the purchase of two Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances and declaring an emergency.
Move to approve ordinance 2137 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion made and approved on second reading? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to have a roll call?
No.
On that one, okay.
You will right here.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2137 on its third reading by title only.
Made and seconded to read by title only? All in favor say aye.
That's a roll call.
Okay, yeah. You just told me that. You just, see, my brain, it's nine o'clock and my brain's going to, going to mush.
Move to adjourn.
Oh.
We're almost there.
Hey, I heard that one, yeah. Okay.
There was already a motion on the floor, I couldn't do that.
Proceed.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Six zero.
Now what? Emergency clause? Do we got to do it by title ordinance again?
Tell us to read it a third time.
Okay, made it again, okay, in ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, authorizing short-term financing as relates to the purchase of two Frasier Type 1 14-foot GPM on 2011 Dodge Ram 4,500 ambulances and declaring an emergency.
Move to approve ordinance number 2137 on its third reading.
Second, made and seconded on third reading? We have to have a roll call though on that one?
No.
Nope, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Five to one.
Tricky.
Motion to read the emergency clause.
Second.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, did you?
Emergency clause.
Okay. Motion to read the emergency clause is second, made and seconded, all in favors?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call. Been a long day.
I didn't.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't see that one. Okay.
Uh, let's see, roll call, who? Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Five to one.
Good. Read the emergency clause. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, emergency clause, that a state of emergency exists due to the need for immediate purchase of these ambulances for the health and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs, and therefore this ordinance shall go into full effect immediately upon its passage. Done?
That's it.
All right, folks, I think we just bought two ambulances, and this was another very good thing you did, very good thing. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right.
I'd like to thank all the council and mayor.
Better thank me.
I bet.
And all, everybody. It was all-inclusive, trust me.
And the two.
Everybody worked on this hard and long. I will. Uh, okay, that's number seven, done? Passed?
Down to number nine?
Number nine, yellow trash bags.
I would discuss.
Second.
Okay.
I would move to postpone this to our next meeting.
Postpone, okay.
Second.
Motion made to postpone, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number 10, signage at Main and Spring.
Motion to discuss.
Okay.
Second.
Made and seconded?
Motion.
All in favor?
Yeah, we got you. Yeah. She's persistent, yeah, she's persistent. Thank you, Ms. Balance, for keeping me on track. It's okay, it's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay.
I would move to postpone this till next meeting, please.
I'd like to have a discussion on that first.
Would you?
Okay, discussion?
Then I withdraw my motion.
No, no, you can still, we can still have the motion, I just want a discussion. Uh, I'm not sure if there's something that one of our department heads need to be looking at on this before we get to our next meeting.
Okay.
May I interject something here?
I mean, please.
Okay. At the department head meeting, we did talk about this, and since we're just, I'll give you a really brief thought about what we talked about. The highway department signs, we were talking about, talking to John Cross about moving those to his over, across the bridge, since it is on the state highway, I believe he would approve of that. As far as the spring and main signs which cover up the knoll, as a part of that, we're talking about either lifting those up or shortening the sign so it can be fully exposed. The 15 mile an hour sign probably moved up along with the, right quietly pleased, attached to the 15 mile an hour post. So that, that's the game plan that Chief Hight and I talked about, and I think there were some other folks there also. Yes?
I'm gonna take it off the agenda and let the city do the job.
My second.
Okay. So this one's taken off. Motion made.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Motion made and seconded to remove this from the agenda, not to be put back on and dealt with on the department head level.
Aye.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
No. I didn't understand what you just said.
Okay. Motion was to remove it from the agenda and let it, let us deal with it from the police department and, and the street department side.
And then you said something about not bringing it back. I won't bring it back unless I have to, but I would not.
I thought it was a voluntary movement from the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. That was part of the motion.
Okay, but I thought I understood you to say that it was not to be brought back.
No, 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 that was just part of the motion. Yeah, yeah.
I'm down with that.
Okay, got it. Okay, any further discussion on that one, because I think we're done with that one. Okay. Crosswalk, uh, number 11, crosswalk in Pendergrass Corner.
To discuss, second.
Okay, made and seconded? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go, discussion's open. Ms. Powell? Ms. Balance, one of y'all, jump in.
Um, is this being taken care of as well?
I don't know that this one's been discussed by anybody. I, I do not know that.
Okay.
I can't answer that for you.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I have been involved somewhat with, with Public Works along with Mr. Armalini over this. I'm not sure what, what the question is here. Uh, I think maybe the question is, and I'm not sure who brought this up, uh, it was this letter, is that the reason this came on the council table?
Was that the one that has the signatures?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Armalini was one of the signatories on here. I think that there were just several concerns, and I think about the drainage issue and whether or not the issue or the construction of a handicap ramp at that corner would not create a bigger problem. Uh, and I think, well, the business owners in there, because the, the concern is that there's been, especially with rains like this, and I'm gonna be curious about when I go up the street and see what it looks like, uh, it has been known that the rains have jumped over the curb and flooded the shops.
Yeah, we're talking about a curb cut now, or an ADA crosswalk?
We're talking about, yes, we're talking about.
Okay, because I, I thought it was just the two white straps we were gonna talk about.
We're talking about curb cuts and a ramp and the whole bit.
Okay, it's a little misleading.
And we've been in discussion with the engineers on this, and I don't think the engineers really recognize the severity of the rain that comes down that street as fast as it does. Within 30 minutes, it can be gone, but within that 30 minutes, it can jump the curb and jump into Zarks and the Oriental, Oriental shop and into the restaurant. We, the owners definitely want to make sure that whatever's done there with the ramp, if that's the best place for the ramp, and I think that's the issue.
The issue, okay.
Is that the best place for the ramp, or can it be moved up? The engineers, I mean, we're still kind of working, we've never gotten a firm decision on, on that issue, so, uh, I'm not sure there's anything the council can do, uh, but I would like to see some time to, to Mr. Armalini to kind of voice, you need to go up there.
Well, I don't really have anything specific to say, I was just wanted to see what was on the agenda and the reasoning. I can just tell you that our concerns are that we've all, that everybody's on that, signed on that, has quite a bit of experience at that corner, and with the rains, we've all had water in our shops. The second part, and, and I want to say too, I mean, we're all for a crosswalk, we're all for a handicap. Sarah and I have been pushing for a handicap cut for years. We're just concerned about where it is and whether that's the best place. Our other concern is that we'll lose those two loading zones. They are critical to that corner. It's, it's, I just can't tell you, and I would invite any of y'all to come up and talk to us about that before you make any serious changes on that corner. But my understanding is, I mean, I haven't heard any more since we met with the, with you and, and Public Works and the engineer. They were gonna do some sort of test, I think, and then relook again. Nothing's been done past that point, is that right?
As far as I know, and I, and I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make you aware to help the Public Works Director to, before anything's done, if, make sure that the shop owners are kind of notified and everybody gets together on that.
Yeah, I'll give it to Bobby tomorrow.
That's all we're asking.
Okay.
We just like to be.
Okay, that's cool.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
And I think that would take care of this issue. Just make sure that.
Any further discussion on this? Okay. We move to postpone number 12.
Move to postpone number 12.
I'm gonna do that one. I'm, I'm gonna postpone it. I sent it to planning in, in, in a kind of a head start, because I figured this was